We're entitled to all this public money. We're not. We should be pulling our own, uh, how does that go? You pull your own trash? You haul your own ashes? We're not doing any of that. On the trails, I want to say this. I have no issues with the trails. I have an issue with the fact that some of these trails may come in close to people's lands. I would like to know a year ahead of time, people that are going to be selling property, people that are moving in, they have a right to know ahead of time if their property is going to be impacted by this. And I would like to see that happen. I want to know a year out because I think by the time one plans things in one's life, one should know what's going on. And the city should certainly be ahead of the curve. On the parks issue, when they had the vote last week for the parks trail, I am shocked that Mr. Lujan, who I happen to like personally, I'm shocked that he voted as a parks commissioner at the planning commission table for a project for his department. Period. Bad move. The auditorium commission, what a waste of time. The city hall employee policy, I hope it's getting better where people can talk to each other and not be feared. The water loss, we are currently at 43 percent water loss. So since we've already losing 43 percent of the water that we're already billing for, maybe we could put a sprinkler in the park in place of the hall that we were going to build and have a little sprinkler out there for our residents and guests. That's what I've said for 25 years now. Maybe that would be the time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dorothy Gerton.
Okay. I'll change the 8:15.
I'm Dorothy Gerton. I've been here since 2001, and I love it here. I love being part of this community. I'm also a member of the Trails Committee. Thank you for your time, and just please vote for the trails. I think they're good for our town. As a new resident here, I was so excited to go out and just walk our trails in town. It was a great thing to be part of it. It makes me feel more a part of my community. So, thank you, and please vote for the trails.
Thank you, ma'am. Jenny Ammerson.
Left. Okay, thank you. Bo Sotory.
I'll be quick. Bo Sotory, uh, just want to, uh, I think that we're all on the same page with the fluoride. I thank you for adding it to your agenda again for discussion. I think it's going to require more than just the agreement of every person in Eureka Springs. Uh, we're going to have to build up some courage and go after it some other way. And, uh, we've got Gene Bland here, maybe we can hold him hostage, do whatever it takes to, uh, to keep our water clean, start adding poisons to it just because everyone else does. We're in trouble. Um, on the parks, we've been discussing this for 20 years. We've made a lot of progress in Leatherwood and Black Bass and throughout the community. We've been discussing this for 20 years. Let's get it done. Let's get it built. Uh, every city I, I go through or drive through, I hear them discussing their in-trail, uh, in-town trail projects. It's something that's nationwide. Let's get ours done and be, and have that be part of our community. Uh, other than that, I'll discuss it at another meeting. Thank you very much for being here.
Holly Winger. Hi, Holly.
Hello, I'm Holly Winger. I've lived in Eureka Springs since 1997 and worked here. My comment regards the potential adding fluoride compounds to our public water supply to force people to intake substances added to their water from China that cannot or will not be documented for the supposed reason of preventing tooth cavities or strengthening enamel of forming teeth which ingestion, ingestion of added fluoride compounds does not do, as admitted even by federal agency representatives in 2004 and '05 hearings, legislative hearings at our Arkansas State Capitol, is ludicrous. Negative health impacts from ingesting fluoride compounds have long been reported in scientific literature worldwide, along with health impacts from lead leaching from water lines carrying fluoridated water. We have time to stop this action regarding our Carol Boone water supply. Please find whatever way possible to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sal Hillson. Or Wilson? I can't tell. Left. Thank you. Natalie Manering. Somebody copying me out there. Hi, Natalie.
I'm Natalie Manering, Victoria Woods. Uh, I'm in my seventh year here in Eureka. I'm sure I speak for many when I say it's been very difficult and frustrating for those of us who understand just how destructive the fluoridation program has been and how much more damage it will continue to inflict before it is finally irrevocably stopped worldwide. Meanwhile, there are more people in the United States being fluoridated than in all other countries combined, and the state of our health as a nation is certainly not improving from all the neurotoxins we are being exposed to. It is impossible for all of us to be full-time or even part-time activists regarding this issue, much as we might like to, but if there is to be a change soon, I think everyone who wants the poisoning to stop is going to have to take a stand, however modest, because numbers are so important. One of the things that I have done is to email the creator of Fluoride Action Network, Dr. Paul Connet. I sent him some of the recent articles from our local papers demonstrating how many of us here are awake and aware and have done our homework and know that fluoridation is not to be tolerated. I asked him if he could offer us any suggestions to guide us in how to proceed. He said that if we form a large, strong group of local opponents in an organized way, that he can do that. Fluoride Action Network has had great success in spearheading the anti-fluoridation movement in the United States and elsewhere. We couldn't ask for a better ally or advisor. We already have a lot of great local activist groups. Save the Ozarks certainly leaps to mind, and they're having an effect. I hope that we will form another David and Goliath, David versus Goliath kind of group to help stop fluoridation. What is at stake is exactly the same: our sovereignty, our health, our peace of mind, our future, and the future of the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bill King. John, you're, you're after Bill.
Uh, my name's Bill. Thank you. Don't have one to stoop. Um, first of all, I'm a trail user and trail supporter, and I want to go on record for that, and you've heard enough about that from everyone else, so I'll go on to other things. Um, I want to encourage council to do all it can to keep toxic waste fluoride compounds from being added to our water supply. The people have spoken loudly and clearly on this issue, and the city should do everything it can to keep this poison from being shoved down our throats. At this point, I believe the city should file a lawsuit to protect our water supply and ask for an injunction to keep fluoridation from proceeding before our day in court or preferably the legislature repeals the mandate in the next legislative session. There is an ever, there is ever-mounting evidence that fluoridation is harmful when it builds up in our bones and of no benefit to teeth when it's, when ingested. In light of this evidence, cities and countries all over the world are abandoning fluoridation programs while we are about to embark on one. The fluoride compounds that would be added to our water contain heavy metals, toxic heavy metals, and come from unknown sources. It's your duty to ensure the safety of our citizens, visitors, and therefore you should do all you can to protect our water supply. Speaking of public safety, I'd like to address the proposed multifamily dwelling ordinance, both the whereas's and the therefor's. Uh, my partner and I own a fourplex on Washington Street. Uh, whereas, the city has a responsibility to ensure the safety of all residents. This begs the question, why is renting multifamily dwellings a safety concern but renting duplexes and single-family homes is not? Does the city care less about safety of duplex renters? If this is really about safety, why is just one segment of the real estate market being singled out? Why wouldn't all housing be subject to the CFO requirement upon change of ownership? And why are there only special square footage per person requirements for multifamily? City code already limits the number of people that can live together in a unit. As an example, what about the single-family death trap where repeated tenant complaints about being sickened by gas fumes were ignored? The house was marginally habitable, unheatable, and did eventually burn, fortunately after the tenants moved out. This ordinance does nothing to deal with such unsafe situations, so how can you argue this is about protecting tenants or all of our residents' safety? Okay, whereas, the city defines operation of multifamily dwellings as a business. Really, where in the code is that definition? Multifamily dwelling is a zoning term that only defines what a multifamily dwelling is and regulates where these types of rental residential housings can be located. Residences are not businesses, and neither the federal or state governments consider them so. Okay, the meat of the ordinance.
You best run out of time, Bill.
Already?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this, these aren't all pages. I'm not reading all of it.
Okay.
And John's going to continue where I leave off.
Okay, that's good.
Uh, this proposed ordinance demands that, in case of change of ownership, a multifamily dwelling complex get a certificate of occupancy and, uh, be inspected by the building official and fire department. What are the criteria for the issuance of a CFO? It's not spelled out anywhere other than there to be an inspection. Will, um, the properties be required to meet current codes or, um, the codes when they were built? That's not spelled out anywhere in the ordinance. How can we sell a property if, if we don't know what it will cost to bring it up to code and it can't be sold unless it's brought up to code? There's a lot of questions, uh, involved in this. Uh, this would cause a huge financial hardship hardship on people, um, and really limit the amount of affordable house, affordable housing available. Um, Eureka, I'm really at three minutes already?
Yes, sir.
Really? Can I read a little more?
No. You said you was going to let John take over?
Yeah.
I should do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. John, come with me.
I'm John Rankin. I'm the husband of Bill King. Okay. Eureka Springs has a severe shortage of affordable housing, and if you want to grow the tourism industry, you need places for the low-wage service worker to live. There are far few rental units available now compared to when tourism was in its prime in the mid-'90s. Much of that housing has been gentrified into tourist lodging, B&Bs, second homes, and future retirement homes. Eureka Springs won't be able to handle another boon if there isn't enough housing for its workers. This body and planning should be encouraging affordable housing, yet time and time again, both do the opposite. The city's vision plan calls for a focus on affordable housing, and the community development partnership is formed for that purpose, yet the city and the CDP have done nothing on this vital issue. Only a few individuals have stepped up to provide it, and it seems we are fighting the city at every turn. I haven't heard affordable housing even mentioned by anyone on this council or planning commission. There are also privacy issues not addressed in the CFO requirement. As you have been told numerous times by the chief of police and city attorney, the city cannot go into people's homes without either permission of the occupant or a search warrant. So what if the apartments are leased when a property changes hands? Most buyers would want that, wouldn't, would want it that way. What if the tenants don't want Big Brother poking through their lives? Does that mean all tenants would have to be evicted when a property is sold in order to have unoccupied apartments to inspect? Seems like there are definite constitutional issues in how enforcement of this law would work. There are also the parking requirements in this ordinance where a variance can only be granted up to 50 percent of the requirement. Our property would not comply even with a variance, but we legally don't believe we have to. We are already zoned as legal non-conforming multifamily dwelling. The city cannot come back and put additional requirements on us when we are already legal. To do so would be begging for a lawsuit in which the city would likely not prevail. We know our multifamily has an inadequate parking, and that situation on the street will get really bad should the large property across the street ever sell. We want to develop parking on the property to ease the parking situation and benefit our tenants, the neighborhood, and the city's residents, but we can't develop parking without the street repairing Point Street to where it's drivable. I've been asking for it to be put on the street repair list for more than four years to no avail. Instead of this constant harassment, cooperation by the city would benefit everyone's interest. If you want to do something positive to deal with the parking situation in our neighborhood, fix Point Street. Regarding the changed definition for dwelling unit and multifamily dwelling, I don't see any problem with the current definition. Why is it necessary to change them all? But then again, the bigger question is, why is this ordinance necessary at all? Finally, the emergency clause. Where is the emergency? Why is this at the table? The variance ordinance to regulate multifamily dwellings coming to this table over the past several years have nothing to do with public safety and everything to do with a petty political vendetta by a planning commissioner. He has made numerous false claims about our property and used and abused city staff and elected officials to do his bidding. Don't take our word for it. Ask Bobby Ray, the building inspector, or Chief Hyatt. They have been witnessing it for years. Since, I've got one more minute here.
No, you don't.
Since he has been unable to shut us down on zoning, I guess this latest attempt is to at least cost us a lot of money. But all this will really accomplish is to reduce the inventory of affordable housing in the city and hurt working people. This ordinance is not addressing a public safety concern. The amount of money generated by license fees is negligible, and the results will be less affordable housing available for working people of Eureka Springs. We urge you to reject this unneeded and burdensome legislation born of a personal grudge and get on with business to help the city's residents. Thank you.
That'll do it for public comment.
May I speak? I don't have, I wasn't able to sign on here.
We have two more people.
What do y'all mean?
No, no. We just.
Two more people? Good lord.
She said 10 more people. We had a sign-up time.
Did you say 10 or 2?
Two.
Two more?
Two.
All right. It's your call.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Yes. Come in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'd like to pass this around the table.
Let's go ahead and sign in there.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the extra. All right, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I'll be brief. You have this paperwork here, so you could read this in your own time. I'm not going to reread all of this. Uh, this was an editorial that I published about a year ago regarding the fluoridation issue. When I was 16 years old in Mountain Home, Arkansas, I was, uh, part of an exchange program to Germany. And while I was in Germany, we had visited the prisoner-of-war camp, Dachau, where they had been doing experiments with different minerals they removed from the people, the prisoners, from their water and food supply. And then they would add different toxic chemicals and whatnot to see the effects over time and see the effects of what this would have on population. They had tried a rat poison that's commonly known as sodium fluoride, and it's an EPA-regulated rat poison currently in the United States. They were admitted, they had found that, of course, if they gave a large dose, it would kill the person, but if they give small doses over a long period of time, that it would result in a mild retardation and, as a result, an increase of suggestibility. So what they did was to put this in the water supply in Nazi Germany, and so the people would be more likely to go along with propaganda and with follow the leader and so on and so forth. And now amazingly, this has been introduced in the United States, and 70 percent of the U.S. municipal water supply is contaminated with this sodium fluoride rat poisoning, although they don't call it rat poison. They're confusing it with calcium fluoride. Very big difference. Calcium fluoride is actually found in the ground and is good for healthy teeth and strong bones. But what they're mandating is sodium fluoride. Big difference. Okay? And as I explain in this article here, we have a few definitions, very, very important for elected representatives to understand. A republic is where the citizens have the supreme authority. This is right in your dictionaries. You could look it up yourself. And a dictatorship is where leadership has the supreme authority. Okay? Now treason is the overt overthrow of the government, where you go from one form of government to another form of government. In other words, if we go from the citizen up to a top-down form of government, we just had treason happen. Okay? Now, an election, in Black's Law Dictionary, as I describe in the article here, this indicates the political will of the people, and we have twice elected not to fluoridate the water. All right? That's very, very important because when the supreme authority in this citizen government mandates through our election not to fluoridate and the elected officials take it upon themselves, top-down, mind you, dictatorship principle, to force our poisoning in disregard of our election twice, this falls under the definition of treason. Okay? Very, very serious offense here because treason in time of warfare is a capital offense. So this is a very, very serious issue that people need to recognize here.
Time's up there.
Yeah. I'm told my time is up. Thank you all very, for your, for your attention. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, be damned.
Ms. Darlene Schrum.
Yes, my name is Darlene Schrum. My husband and I, we filed a constructive notice on May 23, 2012, to all the board members and all the people at the water company. This is the first part of the notice. The second part of it has 22 pages, and it explains many things in there and about fluoridation and their duties, which I believe they know their duties, and that is to provide pure water to us. And this puts them in non-compliance of that because, as I understand it, they have not chosen a product, they have not tested it, and even from the State Department of Health, this has that it must be individually tested. And here it is. I will leave all these papers with you. Under fluoridation, for the accepted chemicals down here, it does show that they, they have been trying to get hold of manufacturers. Well, coming from the manufacturers, as far as the State Department of Health, that is not acceptable. It must be directly from them doing the testing on it to make sure what they're putting in our water because we have pure water here. We have good water here, and to try to put chemicals in it and not know what's in it, there's people all over the country that are getting the fluoride out of their water. Europe has got it out of their water, and here we are trying to put it into it. We need to make sure that this is done in the complete way it should be, and here are papers for an attorney to look at. I have all the certification of getting them delivered to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Darlene, stick around. Stick around.
But that'll do it for public comments.
I think I motioned to take a break.
That was my next comment.
Second.
10 minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 10 minutes. Having finished public comments brings us to number one of the unfinished business, which would be the discussion of the veto on ordinance 2213.
I'm, I'm sorry. That is not correct. The second portion was number five, fluoride, under new business that was brought up under the other issue, under the parks.
We did four and five after our vacation.
Together.
After, not before. Yeah, after vacation.
Yeah, veto first.
Veto's first. Number one, then it was four and five.
Okay. All right. If that's the truth, then we go back to the ordinance. Uh, veto discussion of the ordinance 2213.
Thanks, I misunderstood. Second.
Okay. Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell.
Based on Roberts Rules of Order, which is council adopted in January 2013, I passed out a list of veto procedures that comes from that, and the first thing in handling this in the correct manner based on Roberts is that the city clerk should read the mayor's veto in total into the record, and then we can move, we can move to the next section. So at this time, I'd like to ask that the city clerk read in total the mayor's veto dated June 23, 2014, to include the letter from Wade Williams as part of that veto.
Second.
You make a motion, and we'll do the second.
Um, that would be the normal procedure, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Clerk, the reader there.
June 25, 2014, to the city clerk, Ann Armstrong, I hereby veto ordinance 2213 as amended June 23, titled "An Ordinance Vacating An Unnamed, Unopened Street Located Between Blocks 1 and 2 of the Magnetic Bay Survey Is Platted," Ann Armstrong, Plaid of 1893 Carroll County, Arkansas, which was approved by the city council during the regular meeting on Monday, June 23, 2014. According to ACA 1443-504, Section 3, 2, A and B, in case of a veto before the next regular of the council, the mayor shall file in the office of the city clerk, to be laid before that meeting, a written statement of his or her reasons for so doing. An ordinance, an order or a resolution or part thereof vetoed by the mayor is invalid unless, after the written statement is laid before it, the council, by two-thirds of all the aldermen elected thereto, passes it over the veto. Reasons for the veto. One, during the regular meeting, while in discussion regarding the third and final reading of the ordinance, of ordinance 2213, the city attorney, Tim Weaver, informed the members of the city council that he had the understanding that both attorneys for the Brickses and the Marble Flats LLC were not in agreement over the terms included in the proposed ordinance, and that the city council may wish to postpone the final reading of said ordinance until both attorneys could be present or he could speak with both of them regarding this matter. Two, it is known that city council did go ahead and approve ordinance 2213 on the third reading against his advice to wait. Three, it is known that the mayor's office did receive a letter postmarked June 23, 2014, from attorney Wade Williams, which was dated June 20, 2014. The contents are as follows. Letterhead Wade A. Williams, Attorney at Law, dated June 20, 2014, to Mayor Morris Pate, City Hall, 44 South Main, Eureka Springs, Arkansas, 72632, regarding Marble Flats, ordinance number 2211. Dear Mayor Pate, I am writing to let you know that I and Matt Bishop, on behalf of our clients, have reached an agreement with regards, with regard to the Rock Street issue. The only remaining issue is a contingency that requires the city to grant specific easements in favor of Marble Flats to enable a connection to both water and sewer from the Marble Flats property. In my conversations with Tim Weaver, he believes that this is possible and would be an acceptable resolution to, from the standpoint of the city. Based upon the above, I would request that consideration of the presently pending ordinance be tabled to allow for completion of a survey of the specific center line of the easement. Upon completion of the survey, a revised ordinance will be drafted, which can be approved by all of the parties and presented for a final reading and approved by council. The revised ordinance would include a vacating of the portion of Rock Street requested by Mr. and Mrs. Bricks. Therefore, I respectfully request that the council table the pending ordinance to allow for completion of the survey referenced above. Sincerely, Wade- Sincerely, Wade A. Williams. And in the last page of the mayor's veto, the second page, number four, upon receiving this letter, sorry, I didn't realize it was out of order. Upon receiving this letter, I contacted Tim Weaver, who asked that the letter be sent to him for inspection of the contents. This was done. Number five, Weaver contacted me back and stated the contents of the letter were true, and this is the information he tried to relay to the council during discussion of the proposed ordinance. Weaver stated it would be advisable to veto the decision of the council regarding this matter and give the council the information contained in Wade Williams' letter. Respectfully submitted, Mayor Morris R. Pate.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, at this time, based on Robert's Rules of Order, I make a motion that the mayor's veto be overridden.
Second.
Need a vote on this one? I'm just discussing. For discussion, I don't think we do. Okay. Ms. Nader.
Y'all were told and told and told. There are an awful lot of legal problems. Been told this on and off for a year. Your own city attorney warned you of what will happen if these things are not dealt with before you finish. That's why we have a veto. Rather than overturn the veto, why don't you try taking care of the legal problems, as they have been pointed out both during public comment and at the meetings, rather than leave yourself and the city open to financial destruction?
Ms. Burke.
Yes, well, from Mr. Williams' letter, it appears that there is an agreement possible. But what they're requesting is that they be given more time to have a survey completed. But, you know, so I don't see that there's any legal issue that you're referring to. However, I will refer to legal counsel that is here and city attorney. I think we should probably, at this point in time, we should not veto this, allow it to die at the table, and we'll have to bring it back up. We have to bring it back up, bring it to this table, and then vote on it at that time.
Mr. Mitchell.
When the veto started, as the mayor said in his letter, that our attorney sat at the meeting and he pointed upstairs on June 20th with the council sitting upstairs, referring to Matt and Wade, that there was no agreement, right here at that table in that spot. He pointed upstairs on that afternoon, he said it wasn't there. And then that same day, Mr. Williams writes a letter to the attorney that doesn't come until, strangely, the day after we've had our meeting, in which Mr. Williams says there is agreement. Yet, let me remind you, we were told at council table by our attorney that there was no agreement. Then, when the mayor sends the letter to Mr. Weaver, he says that the contents of the letter are true. I'm confused. This flip-flopping has me confused. I have the table, let me, can I finish?
Yeah, you still have the table.
Thank you. It's confusing to me. And if you follow, the mayor put a veto out there. To let it die now means we have to give it a new ordinance and start the process over again. After 13 months, we're going to start this process over again because Marble Flats didn't get a survey? And then I find that, in fact, they almost had a survey. It was supposed to have happened last week. But then Dwayne comes back and says that the mayor told him not to go out and then mark the Marble Flats so that the surveyor that they hired didn't go out there on Friday, or we could have been resolving it tonight. But instead, now, I think if I'm understood correct, that surveyor and Dwayne may have showed up out there today at noon, but we don't have an amended ordinance here. So I'm kind of amazed at what this, we need another week, we need another week, we need another two weeks. This has gone on for 13 months, and it just continues and continues with obstacle after obstacle after obstacle. It's almost becoming relatively like a Keystone comedy, and it's reached a point of absurdity. We get told by our attorney at the table, and then it turns out the other attorneys, it's not true. I know they're very close. I can see that now. But I think we should override the veto. This issue is an ordinance between the city and the Bricks to vacate a section of land. What Marble Flats is asking for at this time via their attorney, and they're not in this ordinance, Marble Flats isn't in here. This is the Bricks in the city. And what Marble Flats wants is between the city and them because we are vacating, and the Brickses are agreeing to an easement of the 20-foot through this along with a 10-foot construction. So why does we have to postpone this and not override the veto when the issue after this is between Marble Flats and the city? Why is Marble Flats in this at this point in time? What is so important about the vacate, which the city has, the council has the right to do is vacate this? What is so important that we can't go ahead and vacate to the Bricks and then Marble Flats attorney can meet with the city attorney, and they can mark the line, and they can come up with everything they want? It doesn't involve the Bricks at this point because they've already given, in this ordinance, the easement.
Mr. Weaver, you had your hand up.
Yes, if I may. Until a deal is struck, it's not struck. And that's what I tried to tell you at the table. And that's what I understood that Mr. Williams had told me, and that's what I understood Mr. Bishop had both told me, in the courtroom right upstairs that Friday before, that they were close. And I think that's what Mr. Williams' letter is telling you, that they're close. But when you're dealing with real estate in particular, if it ain't in writing, it ain't a deal by Arkansas law. It's called the statute of France.
Okay. Mr. Clung, did you have your hand up next?
Uh, yeah, I did. I don't think anybody thinks that this whole ordeal has been funny. It's been difficult, you know, just to say the least. However, I think in the spirit of trying to get it right for all the parties, and I'm really not in agreement with that even. I still believe that it should be left alone as a street. You know, someday there may be a thousand people live on top of that hill. I can't say there won't be, can you? That access may need to be there. May not be in our life, though. It could happen. I don't think we have the right to remove that street because there are people downstream, so to speak, that may need it. But during the meeting, Mr. Weaver, what he just said is exactly what he said that night, and he urged us to delay and not take that final vote so we could hear the parties, and if they had an agreement, then we could have finalized it under those guidelines. The council could have voted that way, all right? You know, if they're close, if the council is working the deal, let the deal work. That's all I have.
Ms. Nader, you're next.
First of all, council can move to refer, postpone, or table the override veto because more debate is desired. So we don't have to go one way or the other tonight. I would highly suggest that several things get done in the next two weeks because Rachel sat right there and said they were no longer amendable to sharing the cost on a survey. The attorneys are saying we have to have a survey. No survey has been done. It's real estate. You've got to have proper survey. Can't you say this little thingy out here? And in the meantime, we can also ask our city attorney to check into taking away access, which everybody seems to be blowing off and ignoring. And we found out almost the hard way several months ago on vacating another piece of land that you cannot take away access, regardless of how many they have. At least we need to have our attorney look into that and give us an opinion or a final line or something in regards to if we vacate this property, we are cutting off access to 20-plus properties. And I don't care if it's a little teeny section, it's the cutting right through this unnamed road, alley, whatever it is this week. I really, really, highly suggest you ask the city attorney to look into access, you have the survey done, you get all your ducks in a row, and considering it's been read three times and it's been different every single time, yes, we should have one final comprehensive ordinance in front of us at the next meeting, to which time we could postpone or table the override veto.
Okay. Ms. Nader, I think you were next, and then Mr. DeVito, and then Mr. Mitchell.
Okay. It seems by that letter that the only problem that Marble Flats people had was that they wanted to be sure they got their easement. This ordinance guarantees that the city will give them an easement. As I understand it, a survey is in progress. Is that true? They've been surveyors out there, and then they were told to go home, and then they came out again. What is the status of the survey? Does anyone know?
Mr. Weaver did call me, but at the time, there was no statute, according to Arkansas state law. On a veto, there is no statute.
Well, and the only problem seems to be where is the center line of the road? I'm sorry, but these delays just strike me as some kind of a, they're not valid, they have no validity. Everything has been satisfied here. Marble Flats is getting their easement. As for cutting off access, we have already established that there are many, many ways into that property off of Magnetic Spring Road. It's just they seem to keep coming up with one more thing, one after another, to postpone this thing, and we never have had any real valid believable reason why that street was so vital in the first place. And so I just can't see the point in putting this off any longer. We reached agreement, they have their easement, everybody's talking to everybody, we passed this thing, and I don't see any reason for dragging this in any longer, and I think we should override this veto.
Mr. DeVito.
Let me ask Mr. Williams to come to the mic, please.
I'm not talking about Marble Flats, I'm talking about the 15-foot city owned flats, about the Marble Flats. It's not Marble Flats.
Yes, sir.
In layman's terms, where are we on this issue between you and Mr. Bishop?
I can't speak for Matt because he's not here, but I have spoken with him, actually, today. And this is my take, and Mr. and Ms. Bricks are here, so they can probably speak to that. My understanding is that we have reached an agreement with regard to our objections to vacating the road. It doesn't solve all the city's issues, and there are other people who object for other reasons. But with regard to Marble Flats, Marble Flats has reached agreement with Mr. and Ms. Bricks that if we can get a dedicated easement from the city, from the Marble Flats property, essentially down Rock Street, to wherever the water and sewer connections are, which we're dependent on the city to show us where they want that to be, that if we can get that easement, that we will drop our objections to the vacating of Rock Street.
What in this document does not fulfill that?
Well, it doesn't do anything outside of the Brickses' property, and a portion of that easement would be outside Mr. and Ms. Bricks' property.
Toward the street side?
Actually, on both sides. You've got the portion of the alley or Rock Street between Mr. and Ms. Bricks' property and the corner of Marble Flats' platted property. And then you've got from...
Excuse me, who owns that piece of property?
The city. The city owns Rock Street. So it would just be a dedicated easement along Rock Street.
Because my understanding, we had an easement, we don't own the property.
Well, I think, I don't want to get into that argument, but the portion of Rock Street that we would be talking about at that point in time is the portion that is on the original plat, that I don't think the argument of whether or not it's an easement has actually existed. What we would be looking for is an easement for water and sewer utilities in that corridor. And we literally just need to have it surveyed and the ordinance adjusted to reflect the entire easement, the total agreement, not just the vacation of the road, be placed in the ordinance. It's not a lengthy process, but it does require a survey. And the reason for the most recent delay in the survey is, I don't think anybody can confidently say that the city has agreed to do all this. And so I can't keep sending a surveyor out there to survey something that we don't know exactly where it needs to go. I understand the frustration. Believe me, I'm frustrated too. I know my clients probably frustrated. They have to keep paying me to show up down here.
At this time, since we have been at this for 13 months, I will make a motion to, and let me ask the city attorney, we can table this to our next meeting?
That is my understanding of what Mr. Mitchell has written up here. He's used the, there's so many different versions of Robert's Rules. I think this is from the last version, is it not, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir. It is the last.
Okay. At this time, then, I will ask that we table this until our next meeting.
Point of order. We have a motion on there.
Mine supersedes...
We would have to retract mine, then we can go with yours. How about that?
No, mine supersedes yours, the tabling.
A motion to supersede, our motion to table does supersede other motions before the table. You'd have to take a vote on his if it's seconded. And then if it's not passed, then you're back to yours.
Okay. Was there a second on his motion?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, while you're up there, it's nice to see that we're very close here, but I'm a little confused about some of the stuff you said. Because the vacate order before us deals with the city and the Bricks, and what you just talked about deals with Marble Flats and the city. So I'm trying to figure out how is it that Marble Flats and the city, and you wanting that piece from the city, should affect the ordinance that's before us about vacating to the Bricks when the Bricks have in their ordinance that they are doing that? Now, I know there's no center line, and I know the survey's not there, and I understand that, but the street was platted, it's 30-foot wide, they're given 20-foot of easement, so somewhere on one end of this street and the other side of this street, that 20-foot is going to be there for utilities, and another 10-foot is temporary for construction. But my point, go back to it again, is I don't understand why the issue with Marble Flats in the city should have to affect this ordinance. Am I missing something?
And no, I don't think you're necessarily missing something. I think what you're doing is you're jumping ahead and ignoring the fact that the overall comprehensive issue involves Marble Flats because, in our opinion, we're being denied an access point to our property. And so we've been involved in this issue from the very beginning, and what we're trying to come up with is a comprehensive solution that addresses all of the issues and reaches a compromise that becomes acceptable to us. If we don't have an easement, we're opposed to vacating the road.
Sure.
And so by addressing this issue in total, it allows for us to back off from our objection to vacating the road. As far as the specifics of that ordinance, going down the platted road may take out part of their front wall. I don't think they want that. We certainly don't want that, and therefore, we want to make sure where that easement runs in relation to the existing improvements to make sure, number one, we aren't taking those existing improvements, and number two, make sure that we have adequate... and number two, make sure that we have adequate room at the point when we're ready to put utilities in to do so.
Okay. One last question here. Is this going to be resolved at the next meeting? Are you going to have the survey done? Are you going to have the ordinance written? Or is this going to be another stall next meeting?
Well, I'm assuming you're not accusing me of stalling things.
No. I'm just saying, are we going to continue? Not you personally, but let's face it, 13 months later, it's getting a little tiring.
Well, I agree. And I think this could have been resolved a long time ago had we had people that were actually listening to all the facts and not misstating things. So with that stated, I can't promise you that. I don't know what the surveyor's schedule is. I know that he's been out twice in the last two weeks. So no, he's energetic to try and get this done. But one of the things that if this gets tabled that I would like for the council to do is to actually authorize Public Works to go and mark the specific spots that they're willing to allow these easements to go to and give that specific authority so that Dwayne, when I call him, knows that he can go out and mark the spots and that whatever is agreed to in that regard can be surveyed and then put into an ordinance. And assuming that takes place in a reasonable period of time, yes, I think we could potentially meet the next meeting.
We don't. The council isn't over Dwayne and Public Works. That's the mayor's job.
We can get him to do that.
And I know he will. And I'd like to hear from Ms. Bricks if she has a comment to make. And thank you very much, Mr. Williams. I appreciate that. That's... I got it.
I called Dwayne Allen on July 8th, and I spoke with him at noon. He said he doesn't understand why he'd be marking, but it didn't matter because he was told just that morning on July 8th by the mayor not to go mark any utilities and to hold off until further notice because he was going to talk to Weaver. Mr. Weaver, excuse me. Dwayne also has stated several times that the state has to have plans submitted and approved because the main line that Marble Flats wants to connect to is on the west side of Highway 23, and a contractor cannot pull a permit to bore on a state highway, that that has to be done by a professional engineer. And that process to pull those permits can take months of back and forth and working through the process. As far as I know, that Dwayne had told me just this morning, which I will get to in a second, that that process has not been started. This morning, as my husband and I were leaving to go to open the dog park, a public... To pub... Excuse me. It was Gerald, Gerald the surveyor guy, and his helper sitting down on our driveway. We had to leave, but we stalled leaving because we wanted to know what was going on because last we had heard there was no marking to be done because at the mayor's behest, nothing was to be done. Gerald, while waiting for Dwayne in our driveway, said that he was not there to do a survey today at all, that he was marking where the utilities are along Magnetic, and he was working with Mr. Williams. He was also told that Dwayne was not marking anything and that he was just there to show them public knowledge, which was the location of the utilities. I immediately called Dwayne because this contradicted everything that we had been speaking about. He was actually on his way to my house, so we waited for him to get there. He told my husband that he was showing Gerald, the surveyor, where the utilities are because it's public knowledge if anyone wants to know and that the mayor, Dwayne said, the mayor told him to hold off for now, but that before he left, he was going to mark and then he'd be out of there. And he also told Gerald that the state would have to approve anything across Main Street. He told Gerald that, the surveyor, this morning. Gerald also told Dwayne that anything he marks today has to be very vague, and he said he was not there to survey anything on our driveway or our property. And it had to be vague because of the instruction of Dwayne, the state had to be involved. Now, I ask you folks, how much longer do we have to wait? Is two more weeks going to be sufficient to get state approval? According to your Public Works Director, it is not. I don't understand. And I put together a timeline of all of this. We're going to get the survey. We're going to get the survey. We're going to get the survey. And now he's being told not to mark anything? I can't force the mayor. I can't force Mr. Weaver. I cannot force Mr. Williams. I cannot force Gerald Farmer. I cannot force Marble Flats to do anything. We are leaving an easement with the city, and the city keeps doing nothing. I don't understand why Gerald and... We looked at what they marked today. I don't even understand what they marked. But I know that as of today, that Mr. Allen still does not have any plans. And in order for the state to permit that, there has to be plans submitted. I am just... I am baffled at the waiting and the waiting. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mitchell.
Mr. Williams, I need you back. Do you need to have the... Do you need to have state plans to do what you want?
No. We're not asking for a state permit to install sewer lines right now. We're asking for an easement for whatever... At whatever point. It may be five years, 10 years, 50 years. I don't know when that'll be. That is when the permit would be given.
So you're not going to ask for that, and it's not going to slow us down? Thank you.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin.
Okay. I'm going to reiterate. This gives us time to cover some of the legal bases. I would like to see us ask our attorney to check access points and to clarify, I'm not talking just Marble Flats. I'm talking the 20-plus lots that the street or whatever it is today also accesses, 15 of which are ours, five of which are private property lots for sale. Cutting off, vacating that part cuts off an access point. Can you please check about access points, Mr. City Attorney? The laws regarding to that.
Go ahead.
These lots that you're talking about have to have access now. How do these people get to these lots?
The lots are not...
They don't go up Rock Street to get to them.
They're not using them right now.
Well, I know. But why would they buy something that they can't get?
Point of orders.
They're for sale.
This is not germane to the discussion.
Accesses...
You're right. I apologize.
On this piece of property.
You're right. I apologize. I just want to get this over with. I think we have put these people through hell, and it's not fair.
Mr. Pirtin.
Ms. Mayor, I'm going to ask you to speak to the issue regarding not letting the Public Works Director do this. And that is related to the fact that there is no authorization. There is no law.
There is no ordinance to do so.
There is no ordinance, no statute.
Yes, sir.
So we have to get through this part first.
Now, should you postpone it, there's still no ordinance to do so. But in the furtherance of getting this thing settled, I will tell Dwayne to go ahead and take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
But council must understand, it's... The survey is being done. The marking's being done with that ordinance to back it up. It's just in my word telling him to go do it with the understanding of the council. There's no paper to back it up, so.
It's on tape.
Okay.
We appreciate that.
We have a motion in the second to postpone until next meeting, which will be the 28th. Any further discussion? Mr. Mitchell.
One last time, Mr. Williams. We've got two more weeks. What do you think's going to happen? Seriously, I'm really... I'm going to put you on the spot. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll tell you where I've been for some time, okay?
Thank you.
And that is that if we can reach an agreement, if the city is willing to kind of agree to the terms that Marble Flats and the Bricks have agreed to, kind of a three-way agreement with regard to this ordinance, the survey will take place. Again, Gerald Farmer has been here twice, and I apologize, I did not know he was coming out today. Matter of fact, I called him this morning and told him there was no need to come today. He showed up in my office as well. So that's just... I don't know. He's trying to get it done, so we're moving forward. I think he'll come as quickly as he can, as soon as things are marked or as soon as Dwayne can meet him out there. And I believe Dwayne's been very cooperative in trying to get things done as well. So assuming that takes place in a timely fashion and we get a legal description, say by the end of this week or so, then I honestly believe that Matt Bishop, Tim Weaver, and myself can sit down and hammer out the ordinance itself in a fairly short fashion. I'll be honest with you, I hadn't looked at what my calendar says next week, and I don't know what all's going to take place. I know I've got some depositions later this week. But I'm just one of three, and these other guys are busy too. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't realistically hope to have this in place and in front of you. And I wouldn't even have to show up because everybody would have agreed to it.
And at this point, you're comfortable... The city attorney is comfortable that y'all can get together and you can represent the city? Because it really looks like the Bricks part's over with. It looks like now it's Marble Flats and the city getting this together to get it in ordinance. Or am I wrong?
I think it's still Marble Flats, the Bricks, and the city. Because as Mr. Williams said, without knowing where that line is going to really lay right now, the line that apparently there's some concern that goes through a wall. And you don't want lines going through walls if you're going to deviate. So I think they're all still involved. I think Mr. Bishop would want to be involved on behalf of his client. I would think his client would want them involved, definitely.
Okay.
I don't see a reason, as Mr. Williams does off the top of my head, that assuming the survey is... Can be quickly done, that it couldn't be presented to you. Now, ultimately, the people, the six people of you decide whether it's settled.
Sure.
I can't settle it on behalf of the city. The mayor can't settle it on behalf of the city. It's this table.
But you tell us legally.
We can get you the ordinance, I think, assuming that the survey was done.
Okay. And... Okay. That's fine. So based on Robert's Rules, if we table this, we have not lost the ability, should we go back and have to override the veto? We have not negated or lost that ability?
Nope. I went... Just today, after speaking with you...
Yes, sir.
And looked a little further in the Arkansas Code and tried to look at some of the cases to see if I could find anything because you had mentioned that as a possibility. And I could not find anything with a short search. I didn't spend hours and hours, but I can't find anything with a short search anywhere in the Arkansas Code that would say that you would lose the ability to override if you so chose after table.
Then let me add here. It says here, "On other motions that I found, council members also have the ability to make other motions prior to an override. For example, the council can refer to postpone or table the override vote for a variety of reasons. The council must exercise caution when electing to prefer, refer, postpone, or table an override vote. The period of postponement, referral, or tabling is too long. Then the council risks that the subject matter will become stale for future action. An additional caution is required during a veto override procedure because other motions could be out of order." So so far, we're, based on that, we're okay?
Everything I know is according to Hoyle at this point.
So we still have, based on your opinion, should we need to at the next meeting, the ability to override that veto? I would like to hear that. Thank you.
That is my understanding.
All right. Then I'm fine.
Further discussion? If not, there's a motion to postpone.
Table.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to include instructing the city attorney to look into the access legalities?
No, ma'am.
Unless it's part of the motion.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
It was tabled.
Let's cover our votes, people. Should take five minutes.
It's your motion.
We can't do it on this motion. If we want to have a separate motion after this to instruct the attorney to do that, then that's our prerogative. But at this time, I don't think it should be part of the motion to postpone.
Based on Robert's, it shouldn't be.
Okay. No further discussion. It is the understanding that there is a motion to postpone until July the 28th, our next regular scheduled meeting. And there is a second. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Roll call. Roll call vote.
It's an extraordinary motion.
Stand by.
It's extraordinary. Only last.
Thank you, y'all, for showing up.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Mr. Pirtin?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Present.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
501.
Okay. Move this on to... Thank you, sir. Move this on to...
I'll hold you to it. I'm sorry.
Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we ask the city attorney to include in the work on this veto override postponement, the legalities of taking away an access point.
Mr. McLung.
I guess we could discuss this.
Can now. The motion's been made.
I second.
He's already told us that. More than once.
Told us what? Told us what?
That that is an access to those other lots.
I know. I'm saying, check the law in regards to how we are not allowed to take access away. You haven't clarified anything on that, have you?
It's defined in the state statute, 301...
Whatever.
Whatever it is. And, you know, and if you've got somebody that has access and they don't agree to it, then you're taking away somebody's rights.
Okay. Of the 20 properties, the city owns 15 of them. Does that mean we should be challenging taking away access point? Isn't that conflict of interest or something?
I'm not...
That's what I'm asking, if he will look into it. That's what I'm asking for.
You want me to look into it?
Oh, Mr. Weaver, look at that.
Do you have an opinion right here?
I would have to look at which lots in particular you're talking about, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's another cross street in between there. And if there is, then I don't think you're necessarily losing the access to those city lots. But I'd have to look at the survey.
Okay. The best of my knowledge is you cannot take away access points regardless of how many you have. Is that reported?
Mr. DeVito.
Yes. I will make a motion to ask the city attorney to draw up the necessary paperwork based on the survey to include the city's easement for the proposed utilities reaching Marble Flats. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
I don't understand what you said.
She never got a second, and I'm asking the attorney because we're going to have to have some paperwork when we come back in two weeks...
Yes, sir.
Based on the survey to allow access through city property for Marble Flats that is not part of the Bricks' property.
Oh...
You're asking him...
This access doesn't even have... It isn't part of Marble Flats.
It's not part of...
Marble Flats is here. Our property is here, and the road is in between.
I'm clarifying your question. I'll second it. I second it.
Okay.
I believe. But now I have a question.
Whatever you said.
You go first, sir.
What Mr. Williams just explained to us, which is the linchpin of all of this, is that they do not have access through city property that is not part of the Bricks' property. And that's what they want, is an agreement with the city to fill out so they can tie in to the utilities. And that's what I'm asking the city attorney to draft the necessary paperwork contingent upon a survey.
Got it.
That it be available for us in two weeks, or we will be delayed again.
It's not good. It's leveraging pieces tied together.
And there was a second to that motion?
I did second. Yes, I did.
Discussion, yes, sir?
It's, so, Mr. Weaver? Based on this motion, it's on the table now, and the fact that you're meeting with Matt Bishop and Wade, and y'all are getting together, and the bricks has their vacate over here, that you're comfortable that you'll be able to, to get this together for us by next week?
I think so.
Thank you. This is, now, this is specific to the city and marble flats. It has nothing to do with all these lots. We're not there. We're talking about the city and marble flats and those little pieces of land they want, or they need to be vacated to them. Thank you.
Yes, that part I see no problem with, assuming that we don't find out, because I did, I will put this caveat in there to you. I, I did, in talking to Duane, he said he was not sure that there wasn't another little bitty triangle in there that didn't belong to the city. And if they, if we, they decide to draw across that particular triangle, and it doesn't belong to the city, then we've got another owner involved.
Okay. All right.
I have no reason to believe, other than what Duane said, there might be.
Will Jack like it around it?
Okay, does, does, does everyone understand the motion?
No.
One more time, repeat it just a second.
Mr. DeVito?
I understand.
To have the city attorney draw up the necessary paperwork to fulfill the contract with marble flats and the city to provide them access for utility easement in, in the properties that are not part of the bricks property.
And I still second that.
Still second. No further discussion. We need a roll call, since this is an extraordinary...
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Stand by.
Always better to be safe.
Relax, safety. I might give to number two before nine o'clock.
Mr. Pirkpil?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Present.
Five zero one.
Moves us on to number two, eventually this is update on disposal of yardways.
No, it's Parks, Parks master plan.
Number four, yeah.
Question?
What?
Didn't you move four and five up?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we moved four and five up under number one.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
So yard waste is not doing it yet.
So...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I'm good with that, just long... All right. Motion to discuss master plan?
So moved.
Second.
Close open, Mr. DeVito.
I was moved to accept the Eureka Springs master trail plan as presented by the Parks Department to the city council.
Second.
Any discussion, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, sir, I'd, I'd like to go and, and say very clearly that I think that, that is a remarkable master plan. It's, it has a lot of work, it has a lot of passion, it has a tremendous amount of support, as it should. I totally understand the health and benefits, I understand all of that, and there's, there's nothing wrong with it. But there are a couple of points in the plan specifically that are of concern. Not the concept, but the, just a couple of points in it. And I would like to, to bring a couple of those points up. In, one, master plan Oxford Dictionary, a comprehensive or far-reaching plan of action, and that's definitely what that is. But back in 1928, the Department of Commerce wrote an act called the Standard City Planning Enabling Act of 1928, which defined more precisely, precisely what a comprehensive plan and/or a master plan is and how it should be used. It, that had eight specific points in it, identifying issues, stating goals, collecting data, preparing the plan, implementing the plan, evaluating alternatives, and adopting the plan, along with implementing and monitoring the plan. Now, if you look at that plan, it's got all those elements in it. There, this, it's a great plan, there's nothing. But under adopting the plan, the community needs to adopt the plan as an official statement of policy in order for it to take effect. This is usually done by the city council and through public hearings. The city council may choose not to adopt the plan, which would require planners to refine the work they did during the previous steps. Here's the caveat. Once the plan is accepted by city officials, it is then a legal statement of community policy in regards to future development. My concern is a couple of places in the plan, specifically the fact what has been mentioned, that this is a living, breathing, dynamic plan. After we adopt this resolution and adopt this master plan that is now living and breathing and dynamic, who, what entity thereafter adapts, moves, and changes this plan? And what restrictions or guidelines are behind it? And how far-reaching have we said, when we say we adopt this plan? How, what are we giving them, the Parks Commission, the ability to do? Number two, if you don't mind, on page four of the plan, it says, "The Eureka Springs Trails Committee recommends that all unused streets, alleys, and green spaces be protected." Is that a statement that we want to make at this point in time? That we, that we are legally saying that we're in agreement that all unused streets, alleyways, and green spaces be protected from vacation? The process of vacating property in this town is a right of the citizens and the property owners in this town. And to, to take away that right, now, it was taken away in the year 2000 by an ordinance, and that ordinance was extended. And they said that there'd be no more vacating of, of green spaces and alleys until the master plan was developed. That was 14 years ago. So we're finally up to it now. But does this council want to impede or potentially take away from the property owners in this town, the people that pay the taxes? And does this council want to give up the right to vacate to a commission of appointed citizens and a trails committee that is a subcomponent of the commission? Which is a right that resides and rests at the council table? Lastly, the third point, keep trying, James. Page 33, Public Notice for Trails Construction in the Plan. Trail planners have isolated the identified trail into manageable segments for construction. Prior to final planning and budgeting for any trail that will potentially affect nearby landowners, certified letters will be sent appraising those affected by the planned corridor, and a meeting will be set with the Trails Committee. The Trails Committee will then hear and address, and seek to address all concerns. Unresolved issues will be forwarded to the Parks Commission for further review. The Trails Committee is going to hear complaints from property owners and citizens in this town, and then the unresolved is gonna go to the Park Commission? Where is the council in this process? What's going on here? We already have two instances of how the Parks and the Trails Committee have dealt with citizens that have wanted a, a vacate request. One was McElroy, in which we sat here and got to the third reading. And then the Parks Director came in and said there was a little tiny wedge that was missing, and he gave us some memo that said that he would have a discussion with McElroy, then to get a survey, and brought it to us, that we needed to adapt it in the third reading. Then Mr. McElroy stands up there, and we asked him very clearly, did he know about this needing to make this slight change and get this small piece of land? And he says very clearly to us, no, he didn't. And as a matter of fact, when he asked for the memo, which was affecting his third reading on vacate, he had to file a Freedom of Information Act. Is that how we're going to treat the citizens and the property owners when it comes to somebody that is opposed to vacating? Now, that's, that's, number two. We have the, the Brickses here. The Brickses wanted to vacate. Now, Parks had a right, I mean, that was part of the process, and they've gone through it for 13 months. We're still going through it. But is it right that one of the Trails Committee members had a petition and stood in front of Harts, and then stood in front of Basin Park, and had a petition in which they were talking about the Brickses? Is it right to take out a whole-page ad in the citizen paper, put a big red X on the Brickses' property, and put their name in there and expose them? Is that what we're out, is this what this council is going to allow Parks and the Trails Committee to do to property owners and citizens? It is council's vested right, and for us sitting at the table, to protect the health, safety, and welfare. It is not Trails Committee, and it is not Parks' Commission. It, it, that resides with this table at council. And to have a whole different system where Trails is gonna hear and seek to address concerns when they put people on petitions and then unresolved, that's like having the fox watch the hen house, and something is grossly wrong. However, I do support the concept, I do support the health benefits, and I do support the plan. And if the overriding goal of Parks with this plan is to seek funds, then they don't need to go in here and talk about recommending that we not vacate. And likewise, they don't need to go in here and set up a different process for people that are complaining. And likewise, they don't need to have a document in a resolution that is open-ended without any kind of timeline or frame on it, and that it's dynamic, and that's, now you can go ahead.
Council gives up no authority by adopting this document. We still retain the ultimate authority regarding everything related to the city. This in no way changes anything we do at this council table. This is merely a, a guidebook, and it gives people a notion of where the Parks Commission wants to take this city regarding inner-city trails. I don't see any problems with that. This is, as, as it has been stated, this is a working document. It will change over time, it will change regarding circumstances, it will even change regarding the people that sit on the Parks Commission. We relinquish no authority as council by adopting this document. I see no problems with voting for it.
Mr. Pirkpil, you're next.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I like this plan, I, I like where it's headed.
Ms. Snyder, you're going to say something?
I do have some, and I've expressed my concerns to the chairman of the commission. I have some concerns regarding privacy and, and certain alleyways and sets that are too close to private residences. And, and my indication, or the indication that the chairman gave me, was that they are concerned about that too. Don't really intend to invade anybody's private property. And as Councilman McClum had brought up first, you know, previously, that, citizens first and then trails second. I agree with that 100%. The, I'm a little concerned, not too much, but that this is a, we're calling it a master trail plan, a master plan. And I think at this point in time, it's more like a planning document, because it is, it is developing over time, and, or a preliminary master plan. I don't have a problem approving this, but with the understanding that it is going to change, but it has to have, it has to have significant public input as well. And in that regard, the public notice for, for trail construction. The, the main thing I hear there is that there needs to be that public hearing prior to the public notice for trail construction. There needs to be, I, I mean, that's, that's something, there, you need to be able to say, listen, we're gonna have a public hearing, because this is where we want the trails to go. These people, you know, everybody, you know, you need to notify them, you already said you'd notify them by mail. And we need to get, seek the public input on that. That's just my two cents on that. And Councilman DeVito's exactly right. The Trails Committee has the energy, they have, they're, they're willing to do this, so they can, they could be the first stop. The second stop would be the Parks Commission. And of course, it always comes to city council as an appeal. And, and that kinda, I think that kinda addresses all my, oh, one other thing. And I, I really, I really wanna stress this. The only thing I hear, but, we've got two wonderful parks and trail systems right now. I think we need, really need to concentrate on that. Black Bass Lake Dam, if you don't have the lake there, you don't have much of a trail system. You've just gotta holler. That's gonna take 15 years to re-vegetate properly. So we need to address that. I spoke with the, with the chairman about that, and he, he agrees that that is a very important item to address. And in particular, signage around our existing, even the existing trails in the city. I think that's super important. I mean, it helps everybody out. And I spoke with the mayor this, this afternoon, and there are people that call the police department, call, you know, whoever they can, saying, where am I, I'm lost out here, my GPS says I'm in, what'd you say, Springdale? Right, you know.
That's about right.
But, so we, we do need to put an emphasis on, on that signage, and, and, and then the maintenance of the trails. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Eller, you're next.
Oh, I agree with you. I, I have a concern, and I would like to see it in writing, a procedure for dealing with the situation where this trail goes through private property. I mean, we not only represent the Park District here, we represent each individual person in Eureka Springs. That's what we were elected for, at least, that's what I feel I was elected for. And I don't feel that this, that the way this is written protects their right to refuse to have a trail go through their land. Now, we heard Jack Moyer talk about immunity, and you only get immunity if you agree to have a trail go through your land. It's, that's assuming, that, what he was reading, was assuming that you owned that land. If you don't own that land, if that land belongs to the Park District, and they decide to put a trail through it, that negates what he read there. And I wanna see some kind of a procedure where if there are plans for a trail to go across private property, that these people are giving, given six to eight months' notice, and that they have the right to refuse permission to have that trail go through their property. I think the private property owners of Eureka Springs deserve that. I, I think, yeah, so that they knew, they knew that there was some kind of a, of a trail or something, some kind of a green space that went through their property. Nevertheless, it kind of makes their land invaluable. They wanna sell it, they can't sell it if they have to warn the person, oh, by the way, there might be a trail coming through here someday, and you won't be able to fence this thing in or leave your dog out, and you're just liable to have people walking through here. They intend, I, I watched the tape of the Park meeting, of the planning commission meeting, they intend to have these trails open 24 hours a day. That means at 2:00 in the morning, you can have a horde of people tramping through your house, or, I mean, or tramping through your property. And you have to consider that, and if you don't want that to happen, I think you should have the right to refusal. So what I wanna see, before I can vote for this, I wanna see in writing some kind of granting to private property owners the privilege of reviewing the matter of having a trail go through their property and refusing to allow it. I think we owe this to the property owners in Eureka Springs to give them their right. Now, it's a great plan, and I like the idea of trails, and I'm not against trails. But I am, the Parks Commission, these are not elected people on this commission, they're appointed, and there are no city council members on that commission, there is no oversight. And I'm not sure I trust them, in their wild enthusiasm for trails, to consider the rights of the private property owners. And maybe this won't happen for another 10 years. But I don't want anybody to think that, yeah, they're buying this piece of property, but then on the other hand, there might be somebody, a trail coming through it, and they're gonna be liable, because they don't own that land. That's my feeling about it, and I wanna see it in writing. Because our only, our only recourse then would be to simply dissolve the Parks Commission and bring it into the city. And that would be pretty drastic.
Ms. Snyder?
As a planning commissioner, temporary status. We spent three hours on this with the public last week.